Good evening. We'll call the City of Norwich zoning board for appeal Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty five. We'll call the meeting to order seven oh two. We'll call Dave Martin, President Bob Phoenix.
Present.
Dottie Travers.
Present.
Ed Aberbach.
Present.
Mark Benjamin, present, chair. We do have five members, so they'll all present members will be seated. Communications, Rich?
Nothing new. Whether from the local professional defense or whatever. Yeah, send me a button.
Under communications, I relate to Rich today that I will be out of town next month. For our regular scheduled meeting. So there is some pressing issues coming up and I asked him to look at dates that we could possibly do a special meeting and move it forward. And the next date would be July twenty ninth to July thirtieth. Not to say we can't do it in August, but again, we're trying to overcome the the four seated members. So if the those dates don't work. Without their upfront.
No. Chairman, if they could decide if your membership could decide on that meeting day today, because you need to continue any public hearings that we do have one that's going to be tabled. But we do need a date to where it's tabled too. So if we could decide. So Tuesday is the twenty ninth and it's a Wednesday night for the the thirtieth. So let's go to options. And that allows any applications to have legal notices done correctly in the timeframe it's required.
This is Ed. At this time, I'm okay either day, either day.
Okay, I'm all right. Dottie, are you good?
Yeah, I guess so. What date again? The thirtieth?
Or the twenty ninth. It's going to depend on Tuesday or Wednesday. Right?
Okay, it's with okay with me for now.
Do you prefer Tuesday? Would you prefer Tuesday? Because we normally meet on Tuesdays?
Yeah, if we can get the Tuesday, we'll get a room and everything.
I can get that arranged. So July twenty ninth will be a special meeting. Then we'll we'll notice the cancellation for the the meeting normally.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Acceptance of the June tenth, twenty twenty five, many minutes? Yes. German time. Definitely wasn't in your clock.
Yeah, I know. I forgot to delete that note. So yeah, I I meant to email you guys and I was like, I'll just bring it up. But if you saw anything besides that, because I also saw that and then the on the one of the items wasn't bulleted correctly. So I'll fix the format and.
Yeah, I'm not sure what time it was.
It was nine twenty, I think. Yeah, that was like nine twenty, nine thirty. If you want to correct that to be nine twenty, that's what I had.
The motion to accept the minutes as amended to read the adjournment of the meeting on June tenth occurred at nine twenty as opposed to eight P M.
No. Yes.
All those in favor who accept as amended?
Hi, Bob Phoenix.
David Martin.
I. I, Dottie.
And for the record, Mark Benjamin, I did previous to this prior to this meeting, I reviewed the minutes and I viewed the video. Two hours and twenty some odd minutes of this meeting. So I am current on what happened last month. And I will be voting on these hearings coming forward as an independent form voting member.
Chairman, may I ask out of order if you could move up item number two so that you could vote on that to be tabled to your July twenty nine special meeting? The applicants requested that. They have an issue with their their mailings that they're going to address by resending them. I'm sorry.
The old one, old business?
Just Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that under the agenda that we have before us, we amend the order. I'm sorry. Make a motion to amend the order of presentation of applicants that we just continue to discussion immediately after hearing an application. That's my first motion. And the second part of that is to move item number two, item V twenty five oh nine to the first position. And V twenty five oh six to the second position.
I'll second that. All those in favor to amend the the order as presented?
Dottie, I.
Ed Aberbeck, I.
Mark Benjamin, I unanimous. So we will go V twenty five oh nine, one thirty eight, one forty two, one forty six, Main Street Request Relief Zoning Regulation six point five point five to allow for square footage residential to exceed square footage of commercial in a mixed use building could propose for the purpose of constructing twenty residential units in a mixed use building property to T thirty eight Main Street LLC and T one forty six Main Street LLC. Application of that green assessment map. One oh two block two lot fifty and fifty one.
Chairman, I would ask that a motion be made to postpone the opening of the public hearing for variance application number twenty five oh nine to the special meeting on July twenty ninth.
So new, Bob Phoenix.
I'll second that. A motion is made secondary. Anything to add by anyone? Any additional comments? All those in favor to table from July twenty ninth?
Bob Phoenix.
I. Ed Everbeck, I.
Dottie, I.
Mark Benjamin, I motion tabled. And now we're going to go to twenty five oh six, correct?
That's continuation.
Yes. So you do not need to open the public hearing. It's already open. Nothing that has been stated at the previous meeting by the applicant unless they wanted to refresh it for any reason. There's not anything said. It's all part of the record already.
Do you need any additional information there? Is the applicant present? We are. Want to just come up and just for the record, name and address for the record, just recap where we were. I mean, we we read it. We saw it. Just just so everybody, just so we know. Built a shed or a shed used to be. To kind of explain what happened.
Yeah, so Joseph Posey. Virginia Posey, she's the owner. I I've done one that built it. Her son also live at the residence. Built a new shed, called the building apartment before building it. But no way replacing existing under twenty square feet. I I I don't need a permit from what I've read. Am I correct? Whatnot? They told me yes, zoning wasn't brought up. I thought I did my due diligence. Apparently, I I did that. Our yards pretty much entirely in a setback. So like there's no building, anything in the house covers more than the twenty five percent of the lot by itself. It's in the only place it really can be. And that's pretty much where it's at. We we do have another neighbor that is the other person other than the one who was supportive last time, who has a view of the shed from the front porch and also here in sport.
Any questions for the applicant? Bob?
Not really, no.
Ed?
No, not really at this point, no.
Dottie?
No, no.
All right. So I'm going to ask again if anybody wants to speak in favor or opposition. And if somebody speaks in opposition, we'll give you guys a second to everybody, anything they have to say. So is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of this appeal?
I do.
I just need you to come forward, name and address for the record.
Mike Jones. Okay, I'm across the street.
Yep.
So I think it looks great. It's not a eyesore or anything. I was just, you know, charting it well. It doesn't negatively impact the view of the public files, the area, in my opinion. You know, if you had been there ten years ago and it came back today, you would think it was the same shed. That's it's it's good.
Anyone else to speak in favor of this appeal? Anyone else to speak in favor? Hearing none. Anyone speak in opposition? Any opposition? Any opposition? Hearing none. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Cover most of the last one.
Any questions, Ed?
I do have a question. I mean, I, you know, you know, I'm relatively new to this whole system here and this 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 board. I assume something like this has happened in the past. And so I'm asking, how has this been resolved in the past, something similar to this?
Every which way it can be. Sometimes there was an addition built across a poundry line in a setback and it was a hundred thousand dollar removal. There has been property line adjustments, you know, where where they they purchased a piece of property from the neighbor to make it more conforming. You had to take down the shed and sometimes it's just like, yeah, it's it's a learning curve. It's insignificant. It's not a big change and it it's acceptable. But it's always interesting when most of the time this happens, City Hall's not involved. You know, it 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 happens on a Sunday and then it gets discovered on a Monday.
Yeah.
And and that's where it goes. But it it's if it's done reasonable, it's usually it's usually granted. But when you take a ten and build a twenty by thirty, the board usually doesn't look as favorable on it.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that response. That helps. That helps me understand what's been done in the past and I guess that was really the big question I had.
For me, I'd like to add, at least for me personally, I I view them as if they had come before the board beforehand, would have I granted it versus after afterwards? And if you're going to grant it, they come before the board beforehand and, you know, I would, you know, treat it the same way. If that makes sense.
Yeah, no, that does make sense. Thank you.
I'd like to include too that in this particular instance, there was an existing shed which we would take into consideration regardless of when it was built or whether or not it was permitted at the time, which many things aren't until most recently. I think what we are actually considering more than anything else here is not so much the construction of a new shed, but the the increased lot coverage. So that's what we're basically deliberating about for approval.
Okay, thank you. That also helps.
Dottie, any questions?
No, I think it's all been said. Oh, I'm all set.
Chairman, before you close the public hearing, I just wanted to state, restate that last month that Rich did read in the list of exhibits into the record and a letter from a neighbor, Thomas McDermott. So that's already in the record. And the legal notices went out and the the proof of mailings. You get the proof of mailings in there?
I know I can. I know it happened.
Yep, all right. So proof of.
It's not an exhibit list, but I know I have it.
Okay, so I just want to verify that the proof of mailing. And you did, you do give us. Thank you. Appreciate it. I just want to make sure before you close the hearing.
Anything else to add before we close it? Once we close it, we can't take any additional testimony.
Make motion to close?
Or favor to close?
Bob Phoenix, I.
Three, one, nine.
Ed Everbeck, I.
Dottie?
I'm all set.
Both move to discussion? All right, I make a motion to approve this application based on the hardship of the property being in such tight zone that the that any improvement, including improvement of the existing shed would have been in the required setbacks.
One second. Any discussion? Dottie?
No, I'm all right on it.
Ed?
No, I agree.
I'd like to add that the hardship is the size of a lot, a small lot. And that the while we did increase the size of the shed, still a a reasonable size shed.
I also will be great. I will be voting in favor of this. Very similar to the other points made. It's a small lot. It was a minimal increase on the lot coverage. And had this come prior, as Dave said, had this come in front of me, it's a it's an application I would be supporting. So just because it came in late, there's not a reason not to support. All those in favor to grant?
Bob Phoenix, I.
Dottie, I.
Ed Everbeck, I.
Three, one, nine. Mark Benjamin, unanimous motion passed.
You did so much. You'll get further instructions in the mail.
Yeah, usually we will. Yeah, so there's a fifteen day appeal period on the action tonight. And then what I do is I send you a letter with instructions and the variants to file in the clerk's office. And once it's filed.
Then you can get yours on.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Number three, appeal of zoning enforcement officer decision related to issuance of those certificate of zoning compliance related to the construction of a single family home located ninety nine Old Canterbury Turnpike, application of John and Michelle.
Chairman, I just wanted to go over some of the rules when we have an appeal. Since they're appealing Rich's order, I I act as the staff for the Z E O at this point. And Rich is able to provide testimony on his own behalf and hall witnesses as well as the applicant. The 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 talent can also submit testimony and have witnesses as well. The things that you're doing with an appeal to refresh it is you're affirming the Z E O decision or you're overturning the Z E O decision. So it's different from a favorable approval of an application. It's basically you're affirming it or you're overturning it. If you're overturning it, you need, you probably should give reasons and some direction. You definitely need to give reasons, but some directions of of how you want it corrected. So either way, whatever your decision is, you do need to state some reasons on on the record of why the public hearing was opened at the previous meeting. It does not need to be reopened. John and Melissa Wilson are here. They'll be able, I'm shell. I'm sorry. I wrote my own notes here, so I apologize, Michelle. Wilson are here and they'll be able to speak. I think we finished up the last meeting. The last comment was from Mr. Phoenix who asked for some information from the building official. He wanted me to come to this meeting this evening. Building official was not able to come, but he did have submit something for me to read into the record on your behalf when you're ready for me to do that. But I think at this point, it's basically, it's kind of up to you to go, you know, to decide after I could read that into you since that was the last thing that was left off. And then you could ask Rich if he has anything else to present. And then obviously the witnesses and ask questions about. So I'm going to just add a few things to the record. And then also tonight, a little bit different on your exhibit, since it's a long exhibit list with a lot of photographs. What we're going to do is call the exhibit list up on the up on the screen. And I'll just take a motion to accept the list of exhibits instead of reading them all. Okay. So I'll read in from the building official. This is from the City of Norwich Department of Neighborhood Services Building Division dated July eighth, twenty twenty five to whom it may concern regarding ninety nine Old Canterbury Turnpike. From a building code enforcement perspective, the project at ninety nine Old Canterbury Turnpike generally proceeded without major complications. During final inspections for the certificate of occupancy, the only notable issue was related to the energy code compliance. The builder had installed windows with a higher, slightly higher U V factor than the prescriptive descriptive maximum of U dash zero point three zero allowed under the twenty twenty one I E C as amended by the twenty twenty two Connecticut State Building Code, couple issue. Initially, the general contractor expressed concern that the project would not meet code due to this deviation. However, after further guidance, he was directed to use the R E S check R E S check software, which allows for compliance using the performance path. Once he entered the relevant building specifications into R E S check, it demonstrated that the house met overall energy compliance standards using trade offs. The updated R E S check was submitted and the project was approved for occupancy. No other issues, excuse me, no other items under the building division scope, including structural or drainage features subject to code review prevented the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Concerns raised by adjacent property owners regarding potential drainage impacts or stormwater runoff are generally outside the purview of the building division and will be more appropriately addressed by the city engineer or zoning enforcement officer if they pertain to site grading or conformance with an approved site plan. At no point during our inspections was there any indication of noncompliance with grading or flood hazard construction provisions as defined under the Connecticut State Building Code. Respectfully, Dan Cole, Daniel Coley, building official, City of Norwich. And was not dressed in here was a question about any footing drains. And it's my understanding that the property is on it's on slab construction and no footing drains were required. That's correct. So I just wanted to put that on the record. There was also some photographs that were submitted in since the last meeting. And I think Rich is going to call them up on the computer for you. I think you submitted some more photographs. Thank you. And I have those here for them. So that's it. If we want to, would you want to, would you like to do the exhibit list right now? Or is there any more exhibits you're going to be submitting?
No.
Okay. So the exhibit list, what it would just like is just a waiver of, would you say is a motion to waive the reading of the exhibit list is what it is. And there's quite a few items, Rich, if you want to go down. There is, how many, fifty? Fifty two items, including some things. So we're just looking for you. All this is in the in the file. You can look at it, but just excuse me?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, it's just first, I think in order to speak, point of order. He can state his name for the record and address.
Oh, yeah.
Before he speaks.
Yeah.
So.
Yes. So yes, it won't be spoken to until when they ask for you to speak and then state your name and address on the record at that time. So, yeah, so if you would like to make a motion to waive the reading of the list, if you're comfortable with doing that.
Motion to waive the reading of the exhibit list favor of the acceptance presented.
I'll second. All those in favor to waive?
Uh, Phoenix, I.
Dottie, I.
Mark Benjamin, I.
Thank you very much.
My one question. Thank you. I want to acknowledge Mr. Bulley's letter. Thank you for that, but it didn't answer the question that I was going to ask him, which Rich may have the answer to. Is there an elevation certificate issued on this?
No, it's not required because it's not.
In my, in my previous experience that an elevation certificate on slab usually gets issued.
A little more concerning. We're a little hotter.
Yeah, exactly. So, all right. That was my, that was really my only, my only question.
And usually the building official, Deanna Rhodes speaking, it doesn't usually require that as much as someone does. And again, it's in our zoning regulations. So we always require that at foot lane, but not necessarily in the other time.
Okay. So your question was answered.
Correct.
The applicant has made a testimony. Was there anything else you wanted to add, Rich, at this point? Or do you want to continue to additional? Because I know the applicant submitted additional testimony.
Yeah, I've got some more photos that he submitted. I don't else to add.
Okay.
The city engineers online, if anybody has questions for him.
And the health department is here.
So the applicant. All right, the applicant, please come forward, name and address for the record. Both, if you're going to speak, we will both appear. John Wilson.
I'm going to speak first just because I thought the last time we were kind of thrown under the bus and things that attacked our character were said and allowed to be said. And it really bothered me. I don't normally write things or talk.
I'm going to stop you right there.
But I was told that I was
I'm going to ask you to talk about facts.
Yes, but I was, the facts weren't followed when we were here last time. And I don't appreciate that. And I was told that we would be able to to, you know, say our piece this time. So I don't know how you want to rule on that now, but I'm telling you that's what we were told last.
If you're here to give me a speech, I I'm here to hear on a on a hearing.
Okay. And that's why I was under the assumption when I applied for this, that it would be evidence only and we were attacked character wise. And it was allowed to happen. And nobody stopped what I'm doing.
I'm asking you to move forward with your field.
Okay, well, then I'm going to complete my letter because I paid five hundred and sixty dollars to sit here and I think you should listen to it. It is important to address the misconceptions and insults hurled during our last hearing. It's truly astonishing that town officials and builders were granted the final say using their platform to spread misinformation utterly devoid of any evidence. I was criticized last time for not liking change. In fact, I welcome change and I consider myself a progressive. I assure you, my nervousness of change pales in comparison to what I witnessed from professionals in the last hearing. Their visible unease about maintaining their friendships, not integrity of this community was clear. You also saw fit to criticize my husband and myself for defending our neighbors. The irony of that statement is not lost on us and nor should it be lost on you. As public servants, it is your job to protect the citizens and uphold the standards of this town. We were asked about our credentials as if we're not worthy to be here. Well, I will tell you, I'm a tax paying homeowner residing directly across the street from Mr. Silvestri's property, where he blatantly bypassed the original building plans. From my window on eyewitness standing watermost gaze, a clear and present threat to my home, my neighbor's home, a threat that was nonexistent for thirty eight years prior to this construction. Mr. Silvestri was allowed by the board member to attack my husband and my own character. I thought that this was a hearing of evidence, not petty comments. I would like to go over just a few of the things that were said to defend myself like I was told I'd be able to. One of Mr. Silvestri's statements was that we were upset that it had taken two years to build this structure. This was not an issue for us at all. He stated he had medical condition and I was sorry to hear that. And I'm glad to see that he seemingly better. I know what it's like to be ill because a year ago I had a liver transplant after my years of being unable to do daily activities. While in the early stages of my recovery, I went to my daughter's house to visit my grandson and her. After a few hours, I called my husband and said, could you come pick me up? I'm tired. As my husband tried to back out of the driveway to come get me, a truck making a delivery to Mr. Silvestri's house was blocking the driveway. John went up and asked if he could move. Mr. Silvestri said, drive over your garden. John asked the driver. Mr. Silvestri told them to ignore him. And then he proceeded proceeded to tell my husband to go out himself. I guess that Mr. I guess Silvestri forgot some of his behavior. One more statement I would like to address is the claim that the real estate agent told him that we were talking to people that came to look at his house. First, is that illegal to discuss? This is public property. Second, what happened was one, it happened once and the man waved me over and asked me questions about the house and the area, which is a smart move on their part. I can assure you, Mr. Silvestri is not selling because of anything I or my husband is doing.
Ms. Wilson, I'm going to ask you to resent concerning this. I do not need a history lesson on your interactions with your neighbors. I do not need a history lesson on your interactions with your neighbors, just like your time and value aligns as well.
Yeah.
If you wanna talk to me about this, and if you're gonna think you're gonna sit here for an hour and read and scold me, I will not tolerate.
Well, that's how I was felt.
I am sorry for that, but I am not gonna tolerate that tonight. I am running this meeting. You're gonna present evidence. I'm sorry for that. But you are not gonna sit here, so I'm asking you for information.
Is anything that was said last time going to influence your partiality?
That letter is not.
No, but what was said before, that you listened to, there was an attack on us, they were allowing this instead. Is that going to affect your partiality?
An attack's not gonna affect my impression of partiality. Evidence is. Evidence that's presented, and that's what I'm asking for is evidence. I do, I'm not interested in.
Well, that's how we gave last time.
Okay. That was it.
Uh, what I'm asking you for is you, you came with some additional photos. And I would, you know, if you have evidence that shows something that's pertinent to this, but a history lesson to attack. A- and I'm sorry that you're, that it was expressed that these people attacked you. But an interaction on parking across the driveway, that's a police matter. That's not a zoning enforcement matter. It's not a zoning board of appeals matter.
Exactly. So why was stuff like that brought up last meeting?
I wasn't here. I can't answer that.
But they were.
Well, I'm asking you for evidence that's pertinent to this, so we can move forward about it.
Okay. Yeah. I would like to move on to Mr. Dewey, because I could tell by his testimony that he felt we had somehow wronged him. I wanted to be known that I was ha- so happy after we met with him, who was understanding, really listened to our concerns. After a good conversation filled with elevation waterfall calculations. They also, my husband and him also discussed the original plan and spoke how it would have worked if it was followed. In fact, John offered to pay for half the driveway. Um, to be fixed. Um, I do not think that we, so I think this proves that we were not out to make Mr. Silvestri's like Mr. Collins stated. Mr. Dewey suggested at the meeting, this is important, that a drainage pipe was also an option instead of ripping up a driveway. In order to file a quote plan. He then went on to describe that drainage pipe he was proposing.
Can we finish it for you? He then went on to describe the drainage pipe he was proposing. Mr. Dewey described this as a pipe with a catch basin similar to a street gutter. There would be gravel above the pipe during a clogging, and an eighty-foot pipe would extend off of the catch basin, running around the back of the property with minimal dirt to be brought in. As it was determined, that would only push the water more forward toward the road and closer to the septic system, which was Michelle's main concern. He left that conversation feeling optimistic that the, uh, drainage system, if it was done correctly, would be effective. He also promised to keep us appraised of decisions that were made by all officials involved. Unfortunately, within a few days, we watched as more and more dirt was brought in, and the drainage system looked nothing like what was explained to us. And no one called or emailed with any explanation as to why the plan that was told to us was not being implemented. I know you will say that Mr. Dewey didn't have to inform us, but I thought because we had such a great conversation, which I thanked him multiple times for his attention to my concerns, that he would have gotten back to myself or John. The only thing we received was the email from Mr. Dewey that stated the drainage pipe wasn't exactly what he wanted, and there would still be ponding, and that was it. Needless to say, I was extremely disappointed. My wife was extremely disappointed. So, um, we called, so.
Thanks for getting it, John.
During the call hearing, Mr. Sylvester, from the start, admitted from the beginning when you knew this property was going to be a challenge. He claimed that we were pawning on photos of the pond as final installation, which they were not. After the drainpipe installation in March, nothing really changed to the final grading other than grass was planted. Um, my response to that is very simple. Um, where is Mr. Silvestri's photo of the drainpipe? None were given at the last meeting. Mr. Shucko offered so-called pictures of a final inspection taken on a dry sunny day. I asked him now, where are the photos taken after a rainstorm? Where are the permit pictures of the drainpipe? Where is the proof that addresses the very problem we are here to discuss? Where are the pictures of the water flowing out of the drainpipe? Where are the pictures of the proper pitch of the pipe? Where are the pictures of the basin and the ground? I know that when we have worked on, on our property, pictures are given and inspections are done, that if anything is not to code, we must fix it until it is. I can't help but feel there seems to be a, a bit of a double standard here. The standard that John and I provide pictures and pass up inspecting our property doesn't seem to match what is affected in Mr. Silvestri. But Mr. Silvestri just needs to really try. No, meet the standards with the knowledge officials is not sufficient. John and my concerns should be alleviated because Mr. Silvestri did everything that was asked of him by the officials, as if that makes it okay that the water is still pounding after final grade. It is not just a little insignificant puddle. It is a huge pond, deep, deep, over the leaching field, on the neighbor's property, and within a few feet of the road when it rains hard. This is absolutely ridiculous. Does at least he tries somehow absolve him of responsibility for adequate drainage?
All right, Mr. Wilson, again, I'm gonna ask for. You're giving any speech in your opinion?
Get it, John, just do what you.
Uh, I'm, I'm asking, should you have additional testimony?
Yeah. It's all.
Chairman, if you would like, um, Jeff Dewey is online and the senatorian is online. If they, if they, they have some points that maybe that Dave Copland is raising his hand. Uh, like he's here, um, if, uh, you wanted any responses back to what, um,
I have to say.
The citizens have said.
I wasn't, I had evidence.
Well, well, that's what we keep asking you for, and once, I do, I am going to talk to yeah, Band-Aid, I'm gonna ask for them once Mr. Wilson's finished.
Well, I was, I asked to speak last, because the last time I, I, I went through the whole transcript the last time, and wrote down quotes that they said, and obviously contradicted our falsehoods or lies. So if they're gonna be allowed to speak again, I would ask, I would prefer you ask them questions first before I talk. But if they see anything incorrect, like they did the last time, I can address it.
Because we weren't able to last time.
Because the last time they got up after me.
Do you have any additional evidence, testimony, any additional evidence?
Am I gonna have a chance to rebut whatever they say if you ask them second?
This point, I'm asking for evidence. Do you have any additional?
I do have a lot of evidence.
Then please present it.
So in the last meeting, Mr. Shuck requested Mr. Silvestri to explain what he explained to him regarding the five evergreen trees on the border and the pawning at that location. Silvestri explained how the trees are a few feet from the border on the neighbor's property. They were sucking up all the water, and the removal of the stump somehow created a hole causing the pond, if you remember from the transcript. Of course, this is absolutely ridiculous and absurd. Many construction sites remove trees, with some even being where the house is constructed. Trees don't cause a problem if the building knows what they're doing. To say that the tree removal somehow is nominal or new to this construction project can cause the ponding is nothing more than gaslighting. Otherwise, houses would constantly be sinking, and the land would constantly be, have holes in it all over the place. So if you could please bring up photo ones, this photo one.
Yeah, photo one.
This is the oldest photo that I have. As you can see from this picture, telephone pole is probably, whoops. Probably standing right at the telephone pole, just.
Right there with the.
With the orange tag right there. Anyway, little things that look at.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we can see what's up for a second.
Yeah, then that's, anyways, right where that little orange thing is right there, that's where the telephone pole is. So the trees are approximately three feet to the left of that, because we're looking at the, of the house. And as you can see, the trees have been completely removed, and it's completely level except for that one little pond there, and that's caused by the piles of dirt that's there. To say that the trees somehow caused this ponding is absolutely ridiculous. I'm gonna show you as time goes by, that it got even more obscure where the trees even existed, and I'll show you exactly why the pawning was occurring through these photos. And as you can see, the pawning is actually caused by all that gravel that's right there where his cursor is. That's the future driveway right there. It's already been built up to a point where it's causing pawning. And as you can see in the back, there's also a pile of dirt, the gravel back there. That's also causing the ponding, not the trees. If you could please go to photo two. And all these are dated. If you wanna know what the dates are, you can see the progression of time. The dates are on the names of the files. So much stuff. So this is photo two, obviously, it's a little bit later, because the house is built, the driveways, and and as you can see, there's actually no evidence whatsoever in the trees. The pole on the side, that's the, uh, the, the, the sign where, yeah, it doesn't work. The sign where the, uh, the advertisement for the, the property is right there. The pole is just to the left of that. And the tree, the, the trees went from the pole all the way back to, you see an evergreen tree in the back, back there, right over the top of the end of the leaching field. That's about where the trees lined up. They're not even at the bottom of the hole anymore. They were above on the hill. And as you can see what Mr. Silvestri's done, is he has leveled it all out. Every single bit of it is level. There's no evidence of the trees anymore. The trees are gone. There was actually trees in the whole lot. All the trees are gone, and he's gone, and he's leveled the whole thing out, and it's completely level. Well, it's not completely level. The driveway is actually higher, which you'll see in the next photo, photo three. This one gives a very good view of what it looked like before he put the drainpipe in. So as you can see, the trees were actually to three feet to the left of the pole, running back to the tree that's way back in the backyard by the, uh, by the gas grill back there, in a line. And, uh, they're obviously all gone. They've all been wiped out. The stumps have been removed. It's been all leveled out. And actually, I will also say that, um, Mr. Silvestri, although he was concerned about not putting a drainpipe on the neighbor's property, he obviously had no problem filling in the neighbor's property, because everything on the left there from the, the telephone pole, actually, on the other side of the telephone pole, all the way back, if you remember where the property went, was all filled in by Mr. Silvestri, and it is not his property at all. And yet he still filled it anyway. And he actually went and actually drove through this side on the left of the telephone pole, throughout the whole entire construction of the, of the house, I would say for about four or five months.
Civil matter, that if that applicant were sitting here complaining about driving on his property, I'd be concerned.
I know. I'm telling you this because he drove a pickup, a, a, but the electrician drove back there, the plumber drove back there, and everybody, they had four tons of pickup trucks. They drove on that particular spot. And in addition to that, the well truck, which weighs about twenty thousand pounds, drove on that spot. So for Mr. Silvestri to say that the trees are causing the ponding is ridiculous, is my point. So now if you go to, um, photo four. You can see there was also, that's just a puddle, that's not pawning, but there was that, um, puddle was on top, that's directly on top of the leaching field, directly on top and in the middle of the leaching field. And that puddle would happen to stay there for at least a day, maybe, before it actually drained away. It would sit there on top of the leaching field every single time it rained. Go to photo six, please. So this one, um, I was criticized because they took what I said last time incorrectly, that I said they put a bunch of crap dirt into the leaching field. I did not say that at all. I said they filled the side with crap. And as you can see, the pile of dirt on the right-hand side of the picture there, that is not quality fill. That is like, uh, somebody's backyard. It's a bunch of crappy dirt with rocks in and whatnot. You can also see from the, the glisten on the soil that's there, that that is not well-drained soil that he put on that side and filled it in. Now, this is the, the preparations to put in the drainpipe. You can see the drainpipe sitting up against the house there. This is the fill that he put in on the side of the house in order to put the drainpipe in. And there was thirty-six plus truckloads of this crap that was here. And I didn't bore you with the fact of, uh, putting in thirty-six pictures of the crap that was in here. This is just a sample of the, of the type of fill that he put in on the side of the house. It was not quality fill at all in any form or form, like was somehow said at the last meeting. So this is photo six. And also notice in this picture, although you can't see, we have a very far side of it, there's, there's no trace of the trees anymore. So photo seven. More piles of, of crap that are here. That is not quality fill in any way, shape, or form like, like he stated it was. Photo eight. This is what he was doing with filling it, another, more piles of crap right there. And you can see that he's just building up the hill in the back, and then he stopped right there where it starts to dip down.
Can you, you said these are dated. Can you tell me the date of that photo?
This one right here, photo eight.
March third. March third.
March third.
Forty-five.
Yes.
Right on the top. Oh, I believe this was the day that the drainpipe went in. Wait, I tell you the date of the drainpipe. The drainpipe actually went in on the day of March third. This was the same exact day that the drainpipe ditch was built and was put in on the same exact day that the ditch was, was, was dug. Photo nine, please.
I believe I only have a, that you sent nine.
I sent fourteen photos.
Okay. Because, tell me here, there.
I have eleven here.
Got eleven there, so I only have eight in here, but I will bear with me.
So if I can, I can show these to you if you wanna, I'll show the ones that you have that we didn't throw here.
More important that the board see them, the maximum.
Yeah, but I wanna make sure that you.
Well, I did, so I received, uh, a few emails, and as I copied those pictures into folders, I was getting errors that the file already exists, so I assumed they were duplicates, because I didn't look in there.
Is that this one? No. Just left. But tell me, so this one was five, I don't.
That's five.
Five, and that was six. This one we just showed, that one we have. This has, oh, you know what? It looks like we have a couple of the same, this was the same ones.
Yeah.
This one. Did you show this one yet?
No.
Please, I get this one.
That's ten.
This is ten. What's this one?
Wow, no. Oh, we showed that one, that was the water that's coming from.
No. No, you didn't, you didn't show it. You got this one. That one, that's the last one, that's fourteen. For this one, you did.
Yep.
You showed that one, that's when I checked. And this one, you showed the tree in the backyard. And this one, that's one, that's these and the three, that.
You have two more.
Show me the other two. Nine.
That's ten.
Okay, hold on. So we have, go back to nine again. Second, fine, and not that one. I don't have nine. So nine, so you wanna just put your email, Richard, the email, let you call it up.
Yeah.
I already did email. I can't email here. I don't have internet access.
Let me log into my email and see if I can. When I copied them from email into the file folder, there were a few files that it said this file already exists. So I didn't look in every single one of them, so for some reason, there was a file named.
So Rich, it's one that has a lot, like, that it has, like, the post from the pole coming down. It's like an orangey colored bowl, a picture that's coming through. Do we wanna go over these three at least?
So I think, give it to my mail. See if I can find it.
Because he's gonna be on his own.
If he wants to.
Thank you.
Put these aside, too.
If you have ten, you shouldn't have nine. They went in groups of three or four.
Does it help to count out the other ones while he's looking, or does it not?
If, if you can work on the side, but.
Says which ones, in the text, it says which one, but.
This is five, six, this is seven. This is the agenda. Actually.
Went to Alba.
Went to Alba.
Went to Alba and she forwarded.
Okay, here's some, here's coming up. Is it that stacked right there? Those ones, let me see. Those are the first ones. Those are the first ones. Go to the next.
That's one, two and three.
The valid, three.
Four, five, six, seven.
Okay, so the last bit's the one up there. Nope, that's not me.
Next to you now.
That.
That's.
Well, Alba must have probably. Unless you have one. She double sent you the send it now.
That was it. But what was printed there was what she received and printed and I asked her to forward it to me, so I had the digital files. So obviously, there's more.
So we're missing a couple of pictures. If you want to bring your computer around, we can show it to everybody and we'll just kind of hold it up for the people or describe it to the. Right there. We do have three here. I apologize that to do that, but that's probably the best way she can explain.
Sorry for the close to this. This is photo number ten. This was taken on fifth, a couple of days later. As you can see, it's really, really getting close. A lot of dirt has been brought in. As you can see, the whole back has been really built up. I should go back to showing you. I forgot to point out something on the. It's the first one here. Let's see.
After you three see those, I'm going to put it up on this.
People photo one back up the. You could see here that it's been trees were over here on this little hill right. There are no way contributing to this pond whatsoever. As Mr. Shuck, Mr. Sylvester were proposing. You can see why the 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 pounding is being caused right now. It's clearly from building this too high. The back is too high to let any water go through. And the driveway is so very high. And as you can see, the water is just going to sit in this low spot right here. It pushed the waters. It's all constructed by Mr. Sylvester and has pushed the water into this ditch and already. Over to this side when it finally gets full over here. Has nothing to do with trees. The trees align up with that that tree right there. And going forward will be here till that.
So I've got the pictures. Wouldn't be getting started.
Photo number ten. As you can see, it's really built up high now. And you can see all the bad fill right here. And you can see a picture of the ditch that has been created on the side over here.
We're working on.
And this is picture number eleven. As you can see here, it it actually see the drainpipe covered right here. It's covered. If I can get it up there. It is got a little bit of. Fabric over the top of it.
Jeff, is there a way for you to airdrop those?
What we're doing right now is actually wrong because I've got two members that aren't seeing this. The applicants.
I was going to say we can hold it up over there on the camera for them to see, and that's what I was going to do next. But if we could airdrop those pictures, that would be helpful. Or if you can resend it, you know.
I don't have that connection. Play them also, but that's fine. I can airdrop them.
That would be helpful.
Everyone online, we're trying to correct this so we can see a few pictures, so thank you.
Thank you.
Send a drop everyone.
You're not. No people. Yeah, that's you. CW twenty two six.
That's me, but it's not. I'm not receiving anything.
And I can see John's back. See what they.
So you can you can send it to Rich's then.
I don't see pictures. Rich doesn't have airdrop any.
I don't have it in the.
Enablement, hold on.
By the way.
Everyone. Okay, so Riches, do you see his?
You don't have to bring devices together. I don't know if that, I never use that. I don't know what it is.
That's when you put a touch up like.
Every room for ten minutes.
Yeah, that's what I got to. Getting anything. Any email from there to me, those three, this four, that email that you sent to Alba to me, the D Rose.
Was the wifi.
Oh, you know what I can do though? I can share it with with your. I should be able to share it with your, but we're back. The city guest.
Yes, it is. I don't know what the password is, but as long as he's concerned that to you.
Would you like?
I know it. It hasn't changed since May and twenty twenty three.
It hasn't. It's it's a guest. I mean, it's a public, it's a public. We just don't know the password.
Set in. Yeah, I'm on it right now.
Why if I June twenty sixteen?
Yeah.
Yeah. All lowercase.
Work in the basement.
It's right here.
I'm connected to the rate now, try to get. Just mail it to me or to Rich and we'll call it up. Set up your Albert to send you. One that you sent to Albert to send it to me. Thank you for everyone online that's still waiting. I'm sorry. I don't have any technical issue with missing some pictures.
Understood.
Jeff, can you just forward that email to me? D Rhodes at city of Norway.
But he doesn't have. You're off your phone?
They would be JPEGs. I don't know. I mean, they wouldn't be JPEGs. They would be H G I Cs. Can you display those or nothing?
I don't know. I haven't tried it in this new software. They may. It's in the One Drive. It might display.
In the meanwhile, I have these other three. Do you mind if I just show these so we can at least get them? These will be added into the record. This picture. This pounding picture shows the pounding on the side. This shows pounding in the grass, but it was recently. Better hold these up over my back camera, so. Side. Pounding left inside. And then this looks like the material that was brought in on the left when the drainage pipe is. So can you guys see this if I hold this up? Anyone online? Can you see the picture I'm holding up?
I can see you holding up something, but I can't really make it.
Okay, I'll try to get closer through this one.
That's, oh yeah, that's better. Much better. Thank you. So I can make out some, yeah, I can make out some details. Yes.
You want to speak about that one a little bit, Jeff?
Then we wait for ten minutes.
That's the rear of the house.
Um, this is the side of the house.
Side, okay.
This is the side of the house, okay? This is a picture. Jeff and Michelle, do you want to explain this one at all? They can see it. Pounding, I guess I would just say this lots is evidence of pounding on the side of the house. This is the driveway area.
Yeah.
The most important one is photo eleven. Which you don't have, I don't think.
I just want to show this one other one as well. Again, there's the side of the house. Side. Pounding.
Okay.
There's one photograph worth looking for. Do you want to call it up on the computer and I can at least hold it up here? Why don't we do that?
I want to talk to one of those.
I'm not complaining against you unless you're asked to talk and you shouldn't talk. Just like I was told not to speak out of order.
Absolutely. All right, we're going to hold this one up for everyone to see. All right, can you see it?
As you can see within that, there's definitely nothing to do with trees. What he's built there is a very nice goldfish. You can see in the back high. You see on the side by the driveway is high. You can also see on the property where the hill is that was made ten thousand, twenty thousand years ago by the Ice Age. That's very high. And he's actually built by bringing in the thirty six plus truckloads of dirt. If he had put a liner in there, he would have made a goldfish pond. And by the way, the drain, if you know where it actually is, it's parallel to the door, the garage door there. So the drain isn't even at the bottom of the goldfish pond. It's on the wall on the side of the goldfish pond. So it won't even drain. That's why all the water is collecting. This pounding is totally created by the builder because he didn't follow the plan.
Turn that screen off so they can see this from there.
Oh, I don't know what you're showing there.
Hold on.
Again, it's not important that you see it.
I know. Yeah, I see. I see what you're showing.
Okay, I just want to make sure everyone's.
Inside the foundation.
You should cut him off, Mark.
Yeah, I was.
You have anything else you'd like that?
Yeah, right here. Picture number ten. Just like I said, it's a goldfish bowl. You can look at it yourself. It's everybody on the screen look at it. He made himself a gold.
I could see it from the screen. I could see.
It is dry. It's a goldfish pond. He bought in thirty six plus loads of dirt. He built this all the way up. The hill over here on the property. On the next door, um, what number is that? That would be a hundred and three, I believe. And the driveway and the road is here. And if you put a liner in there, you would have a goldfish pond. It's basically what the builder has built. And there's no way on the drawing, we can bring up the drawing, dock number one, that a goldfish plant pond was. What the desires of the land surveyor decided to put on that property. In any way, shape or form. Would you like to see it, sir? Did you see it? It's nothing to do with trees, like was said last time.
So Chairman, after you don't have any more questions for them on their, um, Rich, as an opportunity to rebut.
Oh, I wasn't done yet.
Oh, okay.
I was going to also address, because this is evidence, the lies that were told at the last meeting.
I'm not going to. So, Mr. Wilson, we're not going to address lies. If you have something pertaining to the land in particular. I really don't want, I'm not going to sit here and listen to you to go back and forth on lies. I I you're not going to, you're not.
Come back before. They were said, I have a right to address them. I have a right to rebut, just like they have a right to sit here and rebut me.
I'm asking questions concerning this and I'm not going to tolerate that. I will have your good vote.
Well, I guess I know where you're going to vote then. Can I at least, um, do my summary at the end?
Please do.
So Mr. Shuck said. And this is a quote. As far as an opinion on my rationale for doing something, it's my reason. I don't need to always explain myself. I think that this declaration is beyond ridiculous. It's absurd. Chuck, in front of the Z B A ordained himself as the zoning overlord as a prime ruler of Norwich who is answerable to no one. No one else shall question him and he will answer if he wishes. This is crazy that I even have to come here and do this. Chuck has been giving my wife and I this tone and attitude for two years. He basically thinks that we are the enemy. We are not the enemy. We are citizens and taxpayers of the city of Norwich and we have a right to be heard. And this is evidence that I'm giving you. He's he's not the the supreme leader and in charge of zoning. If I ask him for a rationale for why he is allowing and approved. A goldfish pond to be built on the property, which is not in the approved plan, I deserve an answer. And he should be held accountable for this. This should be appealed. He should do the job correctly. And he shouldn't try to deny ownership of the issue and deflect responsibility by throwing the other city departments under the bus. With statements like the foul, the foul. Which I had set up above, but I won't get into because you don't want to hear about the lies.
Minimizing your opinion, you know, what I'm trying to tell you is I don't think that this is the great avenue to be taken. I don't think you saying that this person is saying a lie or accusing Richard proclaiming himself as a ruler. This is not the venue to take this up with. This is not what we're here for tonight. Regardless if it was said or not, that's this isn't what this is about. We are here to concern, we are here to address. The proper application for a certificate of occupancy. What was said, what was done, how he did his job, how he read the plan, what we're here for tonight.
That's what we went over.
Well, I was just going to say that because they, because Mr. Cawthon said, in no way, shape or form with the blue lines that I had put on. The um, approved plan, that he would ever approve that or anything, but his name is on the plan. He also said that in no way, shape or form, there's a water flowing that way. And if you bring up photo five, you'll see that that's exactly where the water is flowing.
I'll tell you what I'm talking to Mr. Coughlin now.
Well, he's just going to say the same thing again. So I mean, you know, I should be able to have my side, which is the evidence hers.
You presented. I believe you presented your case. I I don't know. I I I I'm sorry, but I I believe I would like to get other conditional information.
I think Chairman, I think it is time to to, when you say comments back or when you give your testimony and there's things hanging out there, the board does have a right to ask. To again, for rebuttal on the other side, because you did bring up some points that they probably want to hear from Mr. Coughlin or from Mr. Dewey or from from.
Rich. So I'll just do the major points because I have, I I am an engineer also. I have a right to rebut. It's a it's a conversation. Like I said, Mr. Cawthon said that in no way, shape or form would he approve the blue line. I can read the quote, but that is in essence what he said. And the blue lines are exactly what the plan says. The uh, the city engineer also said, and in the in the same two minutes, that the 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 drainpipe was definitely working for sure is what he said. And then two minutes later from then, he said he didn't know, and that he should go out there when a rainstorm happens and see if there's water coming out of it. So the drainpipe isn't working. There's no way the drainpipe is working. We can bring up one of the photos of the the multiples of the water that's sitting in there. According to the city engineer's calculation, that thing should drain in one point eight hours, a hundred and eight minutes. I took those pictures more than two hours after it stopped raining and the water is still there. And I said that he admitted that the drainpipe was not working in the email where he said it's still going to pond. It should not pond. That water coming down that hill. If that drainpipe was working, it should never have created a pond and it should have flowed through.
That's your rock up this point.
Again, why, why?
He can't, Mr. Sylvester, you can't talk unless.
You didn't say anything. I have seen hand gestures.
Okay, hold on. Let me speak. Hold on. The appeal is between.
Now he's sitting here chuckling at me. That's bullshit. I'm going to say that right now. That's bullshit.
Excuse me. I'm running, I'm running the meeting for this portion from for this staff quick. You made your points. Mr. Sylvester, you cannot talk. You're here only as a witness on behalf of. You've made your points, Mr. Sebastian, you cannot talk, you're here only as a witness on behalf of Rich, as far as him having questions of you. You cannot speak unless Rich asks that he wants you to present anything. Rich also has here Jeff Dewey and, um, Dave Coughlin. If Rich decides that he wants to call them on his behalf, just, you can't call him on your behalf or anyone. So, Mr. Sebastian, unless Rich calls you to speak, you don't get to speak, okay? Thank you. So Rich, do you have anyone that you would like to speak at this point?
You step away from the, from the counter. Thank you.
No, not thank you, it goes, so I got railroaded again.
I guess this, I would like to speak. Thank you. And I apologize if anybody thinks that I was a zoning champ. But my comments regarding justifying myself. I spent countless hours explaining different things.
This is that evidence, I will say that right now, and you didn't ask the question.
I spent countless hours, my evidence supports my communications explaining stuff that was not accepted, then it came back with, I felt like it was constantly, well, but this, but this. So as far as not happen to rationalize myself to somebody, I can only explain something so many times. And that's all I have to say. Mr. Coughlin, do you have anything to add?
Please. Um, DOUD, go ahead and. For all listening to.
You're.
The screen that just shows here.
You're here as a representative of Zonkis Health. Or did the inspection on the septic system? Compliance with code. The, the health code, it was installed to the plant.
Yes.
In your professional payment, it's a function protocol. It's. Yeah, it's, it's, it's gonna be the health code going forward.
Are you issued permit to disturb?
Okay, yes. Um, they're not concerned with the, the grading.
Oh, on the septic system, no?
No, okay, the filler was used.
For the septic was. C thirty-three select valve, all percent, okay, for, for the septic system, what was used on, sorry.
All right. Other than that, had a we've had a rough spring. We bring, I mean, there's been a high water table everywhere. Normal, I mean. Typical construction site. Okay, so.
Yeah.
Bob? Well, Mr. Sebastian's testimony. All right, you stated that, um, previously that the final grading photographs were actually taken during the. Right, so.
I'm.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm talking with. Sorry. Um, no. Sorry, thank you.
You have a concern, the grading is gonna negatively affect the septic system. Uh, or, Ed or Dottie, do you have anything for Dave?
Just, uh, that, your last question, could you repeat that and then answer, I just didn't quite catch that, I know you were, you were, you were questioning whether or not there was concerns.
Concern with the final grading negatively affecting this septic system.
Yeah, that's the question.
And he, he answered no. He's not concerned.
No, can, no, okay, thank you.
Dottie, do you have anything?
Yeah, a lot, a lot of this is repetitive of what we listened to at, at the last meeting we had. And it's just the same thing over and over, and, and to me, um, things, he, he should have not got all, everybody involved, this should be actually between himself and the contractor. That's where he purchased it, that's who he should actually have gone to with the problems. I mean, this, we should not be involved in all of this. Uh, just because, uh, Mr. Shuck just showed up, you know, to, to help in, in his capacity. But I think it should go back to what he discussed with, with Mr. Silvestri. That's where it came from originally, it always goes back to the contractor. That's where it all goes to, whether the city involved, the city inspectors that the con, that the contractor called in to check on things. So therefore, it goes right back to originally his purchasing of the house. It doesn't, you know, it shouldn't be involving us, this repetitive thing over and over and over again.
Dottie.
That's my opinion.
Okay. There, Claire, Dottie, these are rebutters, they're not the purchasers. There could, there are.
All right, well, it, even as he a butters, uh, uh, all right. Yeah, I don't know, I've heard the same thing over and over, that, that's all it seems to me, it's repetitive one after another. Okay.
Yeah.
It still should have been handled differently, that's.
Thanks, Dave. Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Jeff, you heard.
For the record. Of Dottie on the city. I reside at one sixty-one Basin Road in Adam.
Jeff, you heard the additional testimony presented by the Wilsons. Was there anything you get to add or contradict or correct or just, or, or, or agree with?
Um, yes, well, basically outside of, uh, repeating myself, as Dottie has, has mentioned, um, I I don't see there's a need unless you have any questions for me on it, I don't see a need to repeat myself and, uh, use up any more of your time.
What I.
But I'm happy. I didn't answer any questions, though.
Okay. Um, did you follow up and verify that that drain was functioning?
No, I have not been out there to see that the drain is functioning, um. However, uh, I'm sure if it was not functioning, there would be an issue, there would be water in the street and it would be obvious after every rainfall. And, and I think and, and I feel for Mr. Wilson and I, I tried to, uh, appease him. But I think what's happening here is the reason the ponding is staying longer than what I originally anticipated is it takes a little bit of time for the runoff to, uh, perk its way through the soil and get to the drain before it drains out. But I'm confident the drain works. I thought enough to know that it's gonna work and it does have pitch.
And it's not creating a traffic hazard or a sheet flow problem or anything out on the street? It's not a safety issue.
Don't, sir.
We've heard that the, uh, the, the, it still ponds even with slight rains, um, um, according to Mr. Wilson, um, assuming that's true, um, in your opinion, what else can be done to try to mitigate that?
Well, um, occasional ponding and for, uh, hours is not anything new in standard properties, again. So what's happening is, um, it takes a little bit of time for the water, when it rains and the water collects there. It takes a little bit of time for it to infiltrate into the topsoil and get to the drain before it's gonna drain out, and so I believe that's what the pot is causing much of the ponding is. It will drain out, it's just gonna take a little bit of time to percolate through the soil.
Do you intend to, to actually go out and, and verify that the drain is in fact, uh, operating the way you think it is?
Yes, and I will make a point of doing so this week, and I apologize for not having a chance prior to this meeting to do so.
All right, thank you.
Um, no. Dottie, anything for Jeff?
No, I guess I'm done.
Okay. Thanks, thank you, Jeff. Just, uh, question for Rich, uh, this is basically um, this is an attempt to overturn your decision on zoning compliance. And can you just explain to the board how you go about completing a zoning compliant? Your checklist or what you're looking for, what, what the parameters are, how you would decide that, what would make a home compliant versus non-compliant?
So the major parts are setbacks, making sure that it's, it's made the setbacks, the driveway isn't installed where it's supposed to be installed. You know, as far as the grading, we're looking to make sure his grading was substantially correct. Not directly focusing water to a neighboring property is usually the concern when we're looking at that grading. From, from the, the zoning perspective is, once, once everything's completed, I can issue a certificate of zoning compliance. Typically, what I end up doing is I will, I'll hold an EMS bond if the grass isn't going in or something like that. Um, but you know, it's, once I have the ASB, it's in the proper location. That's generally the requirement to issues to the zoning.
Okay.
May I add to that too?
Please.
So, um, Deanna Rhodes, City of Norwich, twenty-three, um, so also, you know, we would look at the floor plans really quickly to make sure that they, it was a single family house, that they didn't put, you know, six bedrooms in or finish the basement and not get permits for that kind of thing or put in law apartment, so it's just kind of a, um, taking a look at all that. And I concur with everything Rich said, we're also looking for, if all of a sudden they extremely change the grading to like make a walkout basement or something, you know, we didn't expect that, that would be a very extreme change, um, from the site plan. Um, so we're looking for those major changes from when you issued the zoning permit, compare, you know, looking at the interior and the exterior and the, the, the site. And then comparing that to including where the driver location is and things like that, and the grading of the driveway, um, and like I said, if, looking, making sure that you don't have an outlet of putting drain that's operating on the neighbor or something. And then comparing it to, um, what's out in the field from the beginning to the end, and that's how he issues a, um, certificate of zoning compliance.
What's more, I think.
Just, so you went out on a certain date?
Yes. I, I went out on a couple of them.
Right, so you have, you went out this site visit and deemed this appropriate too.
Yes.
It, it met all of your general requirement.
The certificate of zoning compliance, um, is one of the other things that are in the exhibits, it was issued on April first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
So, in, in your opinion, uh, Rich, um, the, the, were there any major changes from the plan versus the finished product?
No.
In terms of the, in terms of the, you know, the grading and the potential for making this ponding an issue?
No, and like I've explained before, you know, when the engineering, uh, engineers design, you know, they're designing a, a site on a, on a piece of paper. They're not going out and shooting topographical lines on the entire lot, they're using basically flyover aerials most of the time. They're actually starting to now, the surveyors are starting to use drones to, to get topographical, but typically they're drawn it on paper, they, they haven't been on the entire site. So it's, so it's difficult and to hold somebody to what is drawn on that paper plan as to exactly what it is. You, you, you just, you physically can't do it, and, you know, and, and the kind of I'm not gonna belittle the concerns on the pond. But it's quite common at construction sites. You know, I didn't issue my certificate of zoning compliance until Mr. Coughlin gave his final sign off. Because the septic system's a concern and I can't until the health department signs off on it. But from a ponding standpoint, when you're dealing with drainage, you actually create rain gardens which catch and hold water. Okay, so that is another thing that, from a site development standpoint, I, I'm not saying that's what was supposed to happen here, but it's kind of in essence what's happening.
Yeah.
Dottie, any, any questions?
No, I guess that's it.
Um, so from a zoning perspective, the requirement is not directing from a grading standpoint, not directing water into a neighbor, is that the zoning requirement?
That's the focus that I have on grading is to, I focus on making sure that we're not sheet flowing or flowing water directly onto neighbor's property, properties are flooding.
Oh, and I guess that includes the road then also too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Also not, not into the septic system as well, right?
Correct, but, but that would be up to the, the health department as far as if it's affecting their septic.
Yeah, okay.
If you close the public hearing, Chairman, um, tonight and decide to make a decision again, I just, because Rich won't be able to speak and no one else will be able to speak at that point in your deliberations, you should discuss, um, if you're affirming the zoning enforcement officer's decision, which was the appeal is being the appeal is related to the issuance of the certificate of zoning compliance, so you would affirm the issuance of a certificate of zoning compliance, or you would overturn that issuance and provide some directives, um, to, to the zoning enforcement officer to, Rich, uh, what he needs to do, um, to correct that and, um, and, and obviously for whatever decision you make, you need to state the reasons on the record of, of why you're either affirming or overturning that issuance. But I want to put that on, I can do, everything else was done correctly, that, that, um, we will print out those other pages, I'll make sure that the. I'll make sure that they get in the file. Excuse me? Did you say I screwed up officially? So I think there was, it was an issue with the email, so we'll make sure that's, we get them in here, otherwise we have gone through the exhibit list and there's nothing else at this point from staff standpoint.
Thank you very much, but I can make a motion to close.
Do you want to, and see if there's anyone else that wants to, from the public, let's really, no public in, is there any other?
Uh, there's, there's a few people in the audience.
Any comments from the public?
They haven't spoken yet, yes. Anybody online from the public? Want to speak? Everybody's muted, so I guess not.
Okay, there is a motion on table closing here.
Second that. All those in favor of close?
Bobby and Xie.
Mark Benj, Mike.
Dottie. Dottie, I.
Ed Ever, that guy.
Make a motion to open the discussion portion of this hearing.
Make a motion to uphold or did you not want to overturn?
Affirm.
Make a motion to affirm the decision of the zoning officer.
Second that. Okay. Really, we're gonna have a discussion, I think we need to have a discussion first. Hit and, and state why, why we, everybody needs to state why they will be supporting this or, or denying this.
All right, I made a motion, so I will start with, um, my review of the exhibit one that was submitted indicates that, uh, there is a distance from the slab of the new building to the property line of thirty-one feet. The area of concern that we've been dealing with is well beyond that thirty-one foot area into the neighbor's property. As I read this plan and with the location of the property line. So, uh, I don't think that it would be in the jurisdiction of the zoning officer to, uh, make determinations on other than the property that he is permitted to review.
Think that's been discussed, uh, about ponding and fill. The fill itself, the quality of the fill, uh, isn't. Directly a zoning issue. And. Ponding, uh, during heavy rainstorms. To the level that was shown doesn't seem like it's, the water is being. Directed onto a neighbor's property. So, I think, uh. From everything I can see there, while it's. Might, might not be the most. Desirable, you will. I don't see that there was any zoning. And zoning officer did anything wrong. Ed?
Based on what I've heard, uh, the, the zoning decision is okay as it is. Uh, I, I, I did not see or hear of anything that would be directly involved with zoning. Uh, you know, based on what, uh, uh, Mr. Shuck knew at the time and, and still does. I, I just don't see this as a zoning issue.
Dottie?
I agree too. Um, after I left, left the last meeting that we had here. Um, I agree that this never should have ever come to the zoning. Uh, at, at any point. That's what I was trying to say before, but of course a couple of things I said was inaccurate. But, um, deep down, we should not have been sitting here listening to this. Um, I almost thought it should have been part of the planning commission. But then that was my theory, but realistically. Um, it should have not come to us, the zoning department.
It had to because it was an appeal of his, the zoning enforcement officer's decision. Since Rich made a decision, this is the avenue to, to do it. You know, that is, this is the check on that office. So, so this was the correct place for it.
Was it correct? Okay.
Right. All set then?
Yeah, I guess so.
Uh, I'm gonna just, uh, I listened to the testimony, uh, through the whole thing. And like everyone else here, I'm sympathetic to the Wilsons' fight. But, um, I have to say, I know and have worked with in one manner or another. The zoning enforcement officer, the sanitarian and the city engineer. And if we work this site backwards and we use the elevation for the septic system. That was plus or minus a half an inch. That's really, that's extremely accurate to get a system within a half an inch. If you take the height of the tank in the inlet and then you have to work that grade backwards, bring it up to the height of the floor. Because that has to flow in. The floor has to come up this height. If you built that house lower, did not grade it up, that house would have been underwater. This had to be built to a designed septic system plan. And when you bring the grade up to make a septic system work, you will get ponding in areas until you get a well-established line. This is been done. We had professionals out here shoot grades, develop it. An engineer designed the system and the arc and the, and the builder built it. And a zoning enforcement officer went out, used a checklist that he always does and completed his job properly. And it's not always to everyone's favor, but it's built to a plan. And when you're working with grade in water and you have two hills coming down, you are gonna get water trapped. And it's just, to me, I can understand people being concerned. But I got testimony that it's not a safety issue. It's not a health issue. It's not going across the water. And it's compliant. And I will be supporting the zoning enforcement officer's decision on all of those facts. Anyone else? All those in favor?
Bobby, next side.
Mark Benjamin, I. Dave Martin, I.
Ed Everbeck, I.
Dottie, I.
Zoning enforcement officers' decision of help. Meeting adjourned. Oh.
Well, we have, yeah.
Staff updates?
Nope.
We have a meeting the twenty-eighth, the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth.
And really quickly, our staff updates before you adjourn is that. Department staff is still working on the zoning regulation amendments. Um, and we've asked for an extension with our consultant for another six months, um, just till December. Um, just because we have many applications that we've been very busy with the schools and everything else, the pain department, your private folks. On rewriting the zoning regulations. So it's, it's a little delay on the draft review. So. Um, you will be, just, you know, we'll be discussing that. We'll be having public meetings for input. So we definitely will be inviting you to come. And give any input. And we're taking in consideration, obviously, the things that are a lot of variances that are coming for you. Um, and looking at setbacks and things like that to kind of make sure you have less variance. That's my staff update.
Motion to vote.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Bobby, next side.
Dottie, I.
Ed Everbeck, I.
Dave Martin, I. Mark Benjamin, I. Meeting adjourned, eighty thirty-nine.
Thank you.